Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crabbe.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to excuse the mayor?
Um, second.
No, make the motion please.
Motion to excuse the mayor from this meeting.
Second. We'll get it together.
Okay.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crabbe?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, acknowledgements, announcements, communications, and reports. Do we have any? No. Okay. Adoption of the agenda, item number six.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented. Right, we're not changing anything.
Right.
As presented.
Mr. Ford.
Roll call please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crabbe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
All right, we're now at public participation. Those of you who would like to address the commission may come to the mic. You must give your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any? Please go.
Trishus Daly, 430 Esplanade. You should have all received our letter outlining our concerns with the city and harassment. I am sure that anyone who has ever purchased a home can relate to me by saying that it is in fact a stressful enough process as is, when nothing in a million years prepared us for what we have experienced since last July. Do you know how it feels when you're welcome to the neighborhood message is to have the sheriff come to your home insinuating that your husband is a carpetbagger and you do not lawfully reside in your district? Do you know what it's like to be told that you are living in a quote "abandoned" home? Not. Do you know what it's like to have it on police record that your beloved home is not only vacant but that it was formerly owned by yours truly? Formerly? So I guess I bought the house way back when, went into foreclosure, and then was able to buy it back within a year from the guy that purchased it. At least that is what the assessor's office was showing. Do you know what it's like to sell your former property and then dump $70,000 in the past year alone to pay down your mortgage and still be told that you are legally occupying a residence when it is obviously the city that is not keeping accurate records? Yet of course, the city has had no problem taking our escrow taxes. Amazing how quick this process is on these so-called ordinances when you're running for a political office or, God forbid, you install a lamppost in your front yard for safety. It is interesting to say the least how these notices state the date of quote "inspection" is the date of the letter. No real inspection, nor do you ever list any repairs to be done under "repairs to be done." And here is the real process, taken straight from the website, your own website, and our title company. An affidavit of vacancy has to be on record for $170, and then a notice of a need for a CO, which is another $160, has to be notified to the title company prior to closing. Otherwise, the home cannot be occupied until a CO is obtained. The problem is, this has not been adhered to and has not been for many folks in our neighborhood. That is unlawful, and it is grounds for a class action lawsuit for the many folks that have been victimized by this ancient and archaic rule that dates back to 2008 when the housing market crashed. And one more thing, I am not a numbers gal, and I certainly don't claim to be, but this pretty much speaks for itself. Our home was purchased by the last owner on August 31st, 2017, for $91,500. We bought it less than six months later for $206,000. Thank you.
Following up on my wife's comments, I've had a couple of questions. What are the intent of these ordinances? Is the city's goal to harass, turn off, and make a cash grab on a couple of new residents who have not only invested in this city and raised property values, all while helping stabilizing a nice neighborhood? Well, you've succeeded. Where was the ordinance enforcement officer for the last owner of our property when it was actually unoccupied for some time and a certificate of occupancy was needed when the owners actually moved in? Our home does not even fit the definition of abandoned vacant property upon purchase, and now code enforcement is trying to exhort money out of us when they drop the ball with the previous owners. Now, two days after we put in a nice new lamppost, they quickly come in and issue an ordinance violation immediately. Not only was this needlessly threatening, the outdated lighting ordinance doesn't fit with 90% of all residential lampposts that are currently installed in this city. You can drive around for 20 minutes and see hundreds of homes that have nice-looking lighting installments that do not fit this outdated ordinance that Mount Clemens seems to be the only municipality around here that has it for residential zoning. Is it code enforcement's job to enforce city ordinances only when a crazy city gadfly makes a complaint and tries to scare off someone who is a new resident whom would actually give a darn about the city? It sure seems like it. It's also funny to see other parts of the city where there is apparently no enforcement of any more important city ordinances. If these actually work to their intent, maybe eyesores like the old McComb daily building, the hay loft, the vault, to name a few, are actually buildings that fit the definition of vacant, and maybe they wouldn't have sat vacant for the past many years. We ask this council to revise these useless ordinances, clean up your record-keeping, and concentrate on areas and more important items that need more attention in the city. Victory in anybody? And stop discriminating against residents in Seminole Hills. We shouldn't even have to be here tonight. This is how the city treats new residents with threatening letters instead of open arms. How does the city treat its long-term good tax-paying residents? We'd like a phone call at least to figure this out with the city and why this selective enforcement and neighborhood discrimination remains. Those are my questions. Thanks for your time.
Mike Zubez, 221 Cass. I wanted to do a follow-up about my ideas about voting. Sorry about that. I really do believe that if we do a ranked-choice voting system, not this election, but put it as a ballot measure onto the ballot this November, maybe we could let the citizens decide. But I want to bring people to the idea of the other nations that use it, such as Australia and the UK. Australia just had an election last Saturday, which is interesting, right? Election on a weekend? Wouldn't that be another good idea? But we'll work on that later. Anyways, so Saturday, they had an election. There was two major parties, and it came out with five, the two major parties still winning it like, I'm thinking, I'm trying to remember the names of the parties, I apologize. But there's the two major parties, the Blues and the Reds, we'll just go with that. And then there's three different alternative parties. So technically, there's five parties that have some sort of influence over this entire nation of Australia. But that's not the interesting part. The interesting part is this Thursday, in the UK, they're going to have elections for the EU that really weren't supposed to happen because of the Brexit thing that they've botched. And I've noticed that there is a new party, the Brexit Party, named by Nigel Farage. I don't know if anybody's heard of this guy, but he's very polarizing, but he has taken a party that has shown up five weeks ago and has put them ahead of both the Labor and the Tory parties in the polls. So I'm really gonna see, I'm hoping this Thursday, there's gonna be a great upheaval of the political structure within the United Kingdom due to the power of ranked-choice voting. And I feel like if we looked, saw that, and saw how much, it's gonna cost the city some money to update the machines because the machines need a ranked-choice voting update, as I was told by my college that ranked my vote, that we need to install basically, but it's gonna cost like a couple thousand. I don't know how many it would need. The city clerk would probably need to look into that. I would hope that if the city clerk can find some free time, maybe she can give the numbers out of the meeting in the future. But if not, that's all right. I'm not gonna stress her. But anyways, so I really do feel like if everybody took some free time, looked into this, looked into seeing how the other nations did it, maybe we could utilize this and create a new political structure within our known nation that listens to a lot of people more and less of polarizing moneyed interests that seem to have complete dominance of our political landscape today. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
My name is Thomas Burns, 291 Jones Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan. To lighten the mood a bit, I just wanted to tell you guys that I am, it was my esteemed pleasure to spend Saturday afternoon at Clinton Grove Cemetery with 30 students from Mount Clemens High School replacing the flags on our veterans' memorials at Clinton Grove Cemetery. It was an awesome experience, and after a tumultuous month with the school and the kids in the school and seeing what could have been of that, to watch these young men and women take their efforts and turn them completely positive was an absolutely amazing experience. Saturday morning, a group of 18 kids from Mount Clemens Community Schools joined me as we joined the Mount Clemens Optimists Club in the cleanup of the road that they adopted on Union Lake Road. After that, the kids and I went to lunch and then immediately went to Clinton Grove Cemetery where we had 30-plus students show up and bathe their gear, toting 185 years of school tradition on their chest, and walked around and replaced all of the flags on the veterans' memorials, during which time they found the former Mount Clemens High School basketball coach, Wade Green. Wade Green died tragically, for those of you who don't know, during a homecoming dance. Wade was only 44-years-old and experienced a heart attack and he passed. The children then went to Wade's memorial and prayed with Wade. They all stood around, they sat around his grave, they paid homage to not only Wade Green but to the late, great Tanisha Stevens. Students had a great time, they learned a lot about our city and our history and the culture of who we are. And I will tell you, I was very proud in that moment to say that I'm from Mount Clemens. And even though we all have our, sometimes we have our differences that we have to settle and sort out in different ways, I am very proud to stand in front of you and say that I'm from Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Do we have another?
540 Clinton River Drive, my name is Carl Haye. I just had a question that kind of actually relates to what people were talking about. Who rides around and looks at city property and whether or not it is adhering to the ordinances? I did have a report for you guys, but I've been combing through your ordinances until I find the actual codes. I'm not gonna put it out because I want it to be professional, and I want you to realize the codes that are being violated to a specification. But I have been going around taking pictures, and I will have a report for you. But I'm real curious to know, because I see people driving through different neighborhoods. I walk a lot, I take my dog. I mean, we're not that big of a city, so I walk my dog everywhere. And it's interesting to see what has code violations and what doesn't, and which city property is not being correctly maintained to a safe level. That's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Dolores Kusiniak, 250 Euclid. I wasn't gonna say anything until this code enforcement came up. I've been here 27-years, and I get complaints of the same thing all the time. I have bushes down my driveway, and this spring they pop up one or two inches higher. I'm too short, I can't cut them. My son cuts over and cuts them. In fact, my son and my daughter owns the house I'm in. I don't own it. So the code enforcement, she keeps giving me a violation. A month ago, she came and gave me a violation for my alley weeds on the fence and this and... So she doesn't put the address because she's in the alley. So I got the notice on my storm door, and I came right here to City Hall, and as I walked in, the code enforcement, she looked, she goes, "Oh, I got the wrong house." I said, "You definitely do have the wrong house. You had all these violations. I want you to sign it. This is not my house." She's, "Oh, I'm not gonna sign it." I say, "Yes, you are. You're gonna sign it, and you're gonna avoid it." Now, you're getting me because I got one or two inches of my bushes are growing, and I don't have weeds on my fence. They're leftover beans and vegetation from last summer. They're not weeds. You can't tell weeds from vegetation. Not only that, but I don't make complaints. I have a house in my neighborhood which is like five houses away from me, actually has junk cars in its backyard. Now, he's got a washing machine back there, he's got all this junk stuff back there. It's been sitting out there for two years. This woman or this person is blind, she doesn't see this. A few houses down, the weeds are growing like four feet, it's been two or three years like this. The alleys are filled with abandoned cars. I even pointed out to her, and she said, "Oh, well, I have to get over there." I said, "When? When you gonna get over there? It's been three years we're complaining." So where does she get her direction from code? Is she giving complaints? Because if she has a complaint against me, there is no complaint against me. And I agree with these people here, you have the wrong code enforcement up there, and I'm gonna say it in public, we need a new regime in this office. We're paying these people. They work for us, we don't work for them.
Couple of the complaints that I've heard here, would you be so kind as to call our assistant city manager or the acting city manager with your statements and complaints? And I'm sure that you'll be responded to directly. There are no other comments from the public, then we'll go on to item number seven, administrative response to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. We have none. We have now an approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the WARP session on May 6, 2019, and the regular commission meeting on May 6 of 2019.
Support.
Do we have any comments? Then, call to vote.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crabbe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, into general business. 9A, adoption of the 2019-2020 budget appropriations resolution and millage rates. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt the millage rates request for the 2019 property taxes and to adopt the budget appropriations resolution for the 2019-2020 fiscal year, subject to contingency reserve fund being allocated.
Do we have a second?
The public hearing was held on May 6, 2019, for the city of Mount Clemens, 2019-2020 fiscal year budget and property tax millage rates. The proposed millage rates for the city of Mount Clemens RS follows. General Fund, 19.84430. Dial Ride, .90650. Pension Fund, .90650. Sanitation Fund, .30. With a total citywide millage rates will be levied at 21.95730 mils, and the downtown development authority district millage will be levied at 1.61010 mils. The proposed budget was prepared using the maximum allowable millage under the Headley Amendment.
Questions, comments?
I just want, if I could...
Yes.
I wanted to explain why we are doing this subject to. We had some last-minute changes that we needed to make to this budget in order to make it balanced. The difference was put into a contingency. So right now, we have $264,000 in our contingency fund, which we all know that the budget around here is a very tight budget. And just listening to the discussion on the ordinances and blight enforcement and things like that, there's plenty of places that we can use this $264,000 or whatever it is after we sort it through. So that is why we did it subject to. We need to have a session here that we can all sit down and see where that should be allocated, especially when we're doing the millage rates and the tax rates where we're doing them. So that's the reason for doing that.
Anyone else? Call to vote.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crabbe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes, five to one.
Thank you. All right, 9B, approval of purchases and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
I have a question about the Ford F-150. It says McComb County contract. Are we purchasing that through the McComb County Purchasing Department or on their, you know, government GSA contract or something?
Yeah, I believe it's through their pricing, through, it's not, we're not buying it direct through McComb County. We're utilizing whatever bid that McComb County used. So if it's that GSA, then that's what it's...
Yeah, because I know the county just put out a massive bid for several types of pickup trucks, whether it was Fords or Chevys. So, okay.
Anyone else? Call to vote.
Crabbe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crabbe?
Yes.
City managers' report.
The city offices will be closed on Monday, May 27, 2019, in observance of Memorial Day holiday. Refuse pickup will run one day behind schedule for that entire week. The regular pickup schedule will resume on Monday, June 3, 2019. The 28th Annual Bud Light Classic Car Show and Cruise Night will be held on Saturday, June 4, downtown on Main Street, from noon until 10:00 PM. Registration night will take place on Friday, May 31, 2019, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Main Street at Market. For more information, please contact (586) 469-4168. The Harrington Street resurfacing project is progressing as scheduled despite the inclement weather and is expected to be complete and open to two-way traffic by the end of June. And we'd like to welcome the following businesses who have recently opened in the city. CSL Plasma at 40 North Grossbeck. Pops Sweets and Treats at 90 McComb Place. I'm gonna torture this one. Tortaz Mexical at 71 North Main Street. Cott's Funeral Home at 226 Crocker Boulevard. And Miles on the Water at 240 North River Road.
But I believe there's a correction on the special events. It's actually June 1st. June 4th is a Tuesday.
Nope. Thank you. June 1st.
All right. Very good, then. I guess we move into commissioner comments. And we'll start with Commissioner Kim.
Regarding the comments made tonight over code enforcement, I hope that a resolution with these residents can be reached with administration so that we don't have angry people coming up here. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Crabbe?
I'd first like to thank everyone who came out to my commissioner coffee talk this month. We had a record-breaking number this Thursday, sorry, last Thursday. It was great to chat with everybody and listen to concerns and talk about, you know, what's happening in Mount Clemens. It was very exciting to see so many people who were interested in, they came out. My next set of coffee talks will be June 11 on a Tuesday at 9:30 a.m. and June 13, which is a Thursday, at 6:30 p.m., both at John's Family Grill on Cass Avenue. I'd like to thank the Mount Clemens Junior Optimists Club and the American Youth Group for the road cleanup and putting the flags out at the Clinton Grove Cemetery. I think you did our city very proud, so I'm thankful to all their hard work last week. I think we keep hearing the very similar arguments, complaints against the code enforcement. I know that's a really tough job, and I know that sometimes you're gonna make people unhappy, but I think we keep hearing the same thing quite often, so I hope that this can be resolved. I also was wondering, I emailed Mr. Wood about the park...
Yeah, we've been playing phone tang.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you for that. And I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier?
Thank you. I too am a little concerned. You know, one of the things that we all can see when we live in the city is the blight, and there's a lot, there's so many people who truly do keep up their homes and try very, very hard to give back to the city. And then there's some others that don't do so well. And it doesn't seem sometimes fair, but we don't always know the whole stories either. But we do have to do a better job of enforcing the ordinances we have or changing them. I know we've had zoning, rezoning on the table for years now. We haven't gotten it done. We need to get it done. We need to look at these ordinances and make sure they make sense for the current time we live in, and we need to then enforce them on a uniform basis, not on a one-off basis. Thank you.
Commissioner Ford?
I too would like to tell the young couple that we're up here that hang in there, it'll get better. I'm sure that the city personnel will work with you. Good luck.
Commissioner Bunton?
I'm gonna urge Ms. Steele and Mr. Wozick and anyone else with ordinance, blight ordinance complaints to talk with Brian Tingley. Brian is our community development director, and he should be able to help solve this for you. So hopefully, in a very short while, he'll either, you know, return your call or have a meeting with you so that this can get solved. And as Commissioner Fournier said, we have talked about looking at the charter, revamping the charter, revamping ordinances, and it's something that needs to get done. I've been asked several times about the street sweeping schedule. I'm hoping that we can post something, even if we just post it for the week of, that we get some dates or some weeks on and some streets for street sweeping. And I want to give a shout-out to Donald Eugene Odell, more commonly known as Digger Odell, the lieutenant colonel from the US Air Force. He is going to be one of the first most distinguished military veterans to be recognized in the first-ever Michigan Military and Veterans Hall of Honor, and this happened May 17 in Lansing. It is for the milita, he's recognized for his military, his community, and his professional accomplishments. Some of you don't know that Digger Odell was a POW for five and a half years in Camp Illinois. He also served for many years as a community liaison at Selfridge Air Force Base after leaving active duty. He's done a lot of good for our community, and I am proud to have him represent the city of Mount Clemens as one of the first people to be honored in the Michigan Military and Veterans Hall of Fame. All About Animals Rescue, the last Wednesday of each and every month, they sponsor spay and neuting of pets, spay and neutering of pets. $40 for cats, $80 for dogs. It's a sterilization, and they'll do a nail trim. Also available is vaccine, heartworm tests, microchips, parasite protection, and other wellness care for your dogs or cats. You do need an appointment, and you can call them at (586) 879-1745, or you can book it online, allaboutanimalsrescue.org. That's a much, much reduced price than what you would see by going, you know, going to the, you know, a regular vet. I want to just take a minute to point out all the cool things that are going around in the city right now. The artwork on the stairs right out here, it's just phenomenal. The mural that's going on in the mall over off McComb Place, there's chalk painting in front of the Anton Art Center, and there are hopscotch squares in front of the Y...
birthday yesterday. May you and your family be blessed with your fondest wishes. I would like to acknowledge the National Council of Negro Women, McComb County Section, for an excellent annual educational banquet entitled Passport to the Future. Along with putting on an entertaining event, the council gave out scholarships to the following college-bound students. James Farrell of Troy High School, Jakari Hamilton of Lanscruz High School North, Mackay Hunt of River Rouge High School, and Ananisa Robinson of Chippewa Valley High School. Congratulations to the student recipients and to the council for the wonderful work that you do. It is spring and things are turning lush and green. People are cutting lawns again and all is well. Please remember to not leave your grass clippings in the streets where they can be washed into the sewer system. This could cause backups of sewer systems and flood basements. It will also damage the very old sewer system and cost you and the city money to repair. Please pick up your grass clippings and not leave them in the streets or on the sidewalks. I'd like to always end with some Commissioner comments, Commissioner wisdoms. Start with the comments. This month is American Asian Month, I'm sorry, Asian-American Month, Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Lupus Awareness Month, National Blood Pressure Month, and National Older Americans' Month, but also it's National Barbecue Month, and since we have a holiday coming up, and there's a hint. And it's also National Hamburger Month, which tells you what you might be putting on the grill. Daily celebrations, Victoria Day in Canada, a day observed in England, Canada, and other former British colonies to celebrate the birthday of Queen Victoria, the very popular, long-reigning queen of England from eighteen thirty-seven to nineteen oh-one. That's sixty-three years of reigning. Also, on May 23rd is Lucky Penny Day. The thought is that if you find a penny on the ground with its heads up on that day, then it'll bring you good luck. So use that penny to scratch off a lottery ticket and you might be a winner. Remember the old days when a penny could buy you candy? Called it penny candy? Not anymore. Anyway, National Missing Children's Day. The Department of Justice estimates that more than fifty thousand children are victims of abductions each year. An astounding number. In nineteen eighty-three, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed May 25th as Missing Children's Day. And what you can do, review safety awareness with your children. Ask, well, as adults, we should be vigilant and watch. Establish neighborhood watch groups, neighbors helping neighbors. See something, say something. Report anything that seems suspicious. Maintain up-to-date records of your children. That includes photographs and fingerprints. And I know some people are leery about the fingerprint thing, but it's better to have that and your child can be located than to not have it and add it, add, add a additional burden on the people who are trying to search for your child. And of course, there is Memorial Day, the last day in May. It was originally celebrated on May 30th, but in nineteen seventy-one, it was changed to be the last Monday in May, to create a three-day weekend. Regardless of the date, we encourage you to remember the service men and women that gave the ultimate sacrifice while serving to protect our country. The celebration goes back to eighteen sixty-five and the end of the Civil War. You can also take this day to remember any lost loved one in whatever way you feel appropriate. Commissioner Wisdom, I have two for the night. Great leaders are willing to sacrifice the numbers for the people. Poor leaders are willing to sacrifice the people for the numbers. That's by Simon Sinek. The other one is, the most dangerous of all falsehoods is a slightly distorted truth. And that's by G.C. Letzenberg. And with that, I ask for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Support.
Motion adjourned. I mean, meeting adjourned. Motion adjourned to, oh, all in favor, I'm sorry. Not here too quick.
Aye.
Any, any opposition?